All right. Good morning, everybody. It looks like everybody who is seeking to join our conference has been able to log in. My name is Alan Lilly. I'm the Presiding Hearing Officer of the State Water Resources Control Board's Administrative Hearings Office. This is a continuation of the AHO's hearing on the draft cease and desist order issued by the prosecution team against Blue Triton Brands Inc., which we refer to as Blue Triton. Today is April 25, 2022, and it's just after 9:00 a.m. The parties have all previously entered their appearances in the previous rounds of this hearing. I don't see anybody new, but I'll just ask, is there anybody who has not previously entered an appearance who wants to enter an appearance this morning? All right, hearing done, we will proceed. Before we get started with the hearing on the party's rebuttal testimony and exhibits, I want to discuss AHO staff exhibits five and six, which I briefly described toward the end of our last day of hearing. AHO five is all files in the folder titled Hotel Property Daily Volume Data, which is within the Historical Diversion Data Folder in the Blue Triton Brands Inc. folder that's on the AHO FTP site, or in the AHO FTP folder, I should say. And AHO six is all files in the folder titled Strawberry Creek Daily Volume Data, which is within this same folder. Does anybody have any objections to these exhibits being admitted into evidence? All right, hearing done, they will be admitted into evidence. Now, the next item on the agenda for this morning is we received, apparently it came in late yesterday afternoon or early evening, a motion in Lemonade from Blue Triton. And then this morning, we received oppositions from Ms. Doty on behalf of Story of Stuff Project, and Ms. Frye and Mr. Lowe on behalf of themselves. I've started looking through those documents. They are of some length. And what I want to do is read them thoroughly this morning, and I'm sorry I didn't get to them sooner, and some of them just came in recently, and rule on that before we continue with the hearing. So with that, I am going to take a recess until 9:30. I think that would be sufficient time for me to do that. So probably best if you stay logged in, but you can turn off your camera and your microphone, and we will be back at 9:30. Oh wait, so does anybody, before we do that, I do see a hand. Ms. Belenky, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. The Center for Biological Diversity also opposes the motion in Lemonade. I did not have time between whatever time it was filed last evening and this morning to file a written response, but we also oppose it on the bases that were articulated by Ms. Doty in the story of stuff, as well as others.
All right. Thank you for letting me know that. Is there anything else before we take a brief break? Oh yeah, Mr. Petrazella, your hand is up. Good morning.
Mr. Lilly, the prosecution team opposes the motion in Lemonade. We believe the basis for Mr. Edgar's testimony is properly laid out in his statement.
All right. And does anybody else want to say anything? All right, well, thank you for that input from both of you, Ms. Belenky and Mr. Petrazelli. We will be in research until 9:30, and we'll be back then. Thank you.
All right, we're back on the record and before I get started with anything else, I didn't confirm before Ms. Dias, our court reporter, it looks like you are present. Are you in fact present?
I am here, Mr. Lilly. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you and good morning. All right, with that, um, looks like everybody is back. I have now had an opportunity to review of Blue Triton's motion in limine to strike and or exclude proposed rebuttal testimony exhibits. And the response, Ms. Doty's response, um, Mr. Lowe's response and Ms. Frye's response. And I also have considered the oral responses from Ms. Valeki and Mr. Petroselli. And here are my rulings. Um, I'm going to just go through the order that the matters are stated in Blue Triton's motion. Regarding Mr. Eggers' proposed testimony, um, I deny the motion in limine. I believe that the Mr. Eggers proposed, the written proposed testimony is in fact appropriate rebuttal. And, and to the extent there may be some elements in it that are not exactly a rebuttal in my discretion, um, I allow those, I will allow those to, to come in for him to testify as to that. Regarding the question of um, whether Mr. Eggers is testifying as to legal conclusion or making legal arguments, I think most of his testimony concerns state water board practice, which are factual allegations or statements rather than legal arguments. But I, I will say just in general, um, several witnesses have made what I will call statements regarding conclusions on legal issues. Um, and to the extent I've allowed those, obviously, that doesn't mean that I'm going to accept those legal arguments when I prepare conclusions of law in my written proposed order. Um, I will analyze the law, all the relevant legal authorities and make my own legal analysis and it's not really an evidentiary question. I'm not going to weigh witnesses' testimony on legal issues to do my legal analysis. All right. Oh, there is, um, and this will apply to several of the, um, elements of the motion. Uh, Blue Triton's motion also says Blue Triton must be permitted an opportunity to submit rebuttal. I don't, I don't know if must is the right word, but I will allow, uh, we will talk about this at the end of this round of hearings, but my uh, plan right now is to allow Mr. Nichols. I think all of these um, issues concern Mr. Nichols testimony. So I think it will be just Mr. Nichols. And my plan right now is to allow uh, some additional, um, response, whether we call it sir, sir rebuttal or whatever, uh, from Mr. Nichols specifically responding to uh, some of these new, these elements of testimony that have been made in rebuttal to his prior testimony. So we can cover that later. Regarding Mr. Kabel, um, I'm going to grant the motion in limine as to Mr. Kabel's testimony. Um, this, Mr. Kabel's test, uh, written proposed testimony is solely legal argument. There aren't any, um, as I read it, I didn't see anything uh, that was anything regarding factual allegations. And I, I think this has crossed the line. Um, it's certainly appropriate legal argument. Uh, and I will consider it. And so my plan is to accept exhibits SOS 284 and 286 as non-evidentiary policy statements. Um, effectively, they're like any other legal briefing that's been submitted in this matter. Um, and I certainly will consider those legal arguments in them. Uh, but I, I don't think it's, I do not think it's inappropriate uh, to have an attorney and, and certainly I'm not questioning Mr. Kabel's qualifications. He appears to be very qualified in this area. Uh, but I do not think it's appropriate for any attorney to testify on legal issues. Um, we, we have testimony to prepare findings of fact. Um, we do legal arguments through briefing and otherwise uh, to prepare our conclusions of law. Um, and this Mr. Kabel's, uh, deck, written proposed testimony or declaration is solely on conclusions of law. So uh, that's, that's going to be my ruling with Mr. Mr. Kabel. So that means as I say, two SOS 284 and 286 will be accepted as non-evidentiary policy statements. Exhibit 280, SOS 285, which is Mr. Kabel's um, qualifications will not be admitted into evidence. Um, and of course then there will be no cross-examination of Mr. Kabel. Uh, but certainly any party may refer uh, to the arguments that Mr. Kabel has made in two eight SOS 284 and 286 uh, in their closing briefs, either as support for their arguments or disagreeing with those arguments. So I think that will be the most expeditious way uh, to address that. Uh, regarding the testimony that Ms. Frye and Mr. Lowe uh, submitted, uh, or the S story of stuff submitted. Um, let me try that one again. Regarding the testimony of Ms. Frye and Mr. Lowe that SOS submitted, I deny the motion. I think both of those um, written proposed testimony are appropriate rebuttal. And to the extent they're not, I'm going to exercise my discretion to allow those. I think they're certainly very relevant to our hearing issues. And I think they they do largely, if not completely, um, address the issues that Mr. Nichols made, just because of some of the statements he made in his testimony. Uh, regarding Ms. Doty's declaration, I'm going to deny the motion as to that. Um, Ms. Doty clearly will be, since she's submitting her declaration as testimony, she will be subject to cross-examination. I think, and Ms. Doty, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you did this in the first round, you submitted written proposed testimony to authenticate some exhibits. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And did you take the oath at that time or were you subject to cross-examination?
I honestly don't recall. I am happy to if I did not.
I, I can't, I didn't go back and check. I've had limited time, but I think you did. And if not, we'll have you take the oath again and be subject to cross-examination. Now, uh, Blue Triton does argue that some of these exhibits may be hearsay. Um, and they, and that argument may in fact be valid. Um, that, you know, all Ms. Doty can do is authenticate these documents, but uh, she cannot probably testify as to the truths of the matters in them, at least her written proposed testimony does not purport to do that. Um, so Blue Triton may have a specific objections to some of these documents on hearsay grounds, which I will consider at that time when we get there. And of course, hearsay is subject to admissibility under government code 11 513 subdivision D. Um, regarding Mr. Zidane's testimony, um, I deny the motion in limine. I, I, I frankly believe his testimony does in fact, but on Mr. Nichols' testimony, um, of course, I'm not saying who I agree with or disagree with, but I think on the issue of whether or not it's rebuttal, it is appropriate rebuttal. Uh, but to the extent any of it may not be, I'm exercising my discretion to allow that, uh, to come in. And then the same ruling for Mr. Ms. Frye's and Mr. Lowe's personal testimony. Um, I do believe that they are largely, if not completely rebutting, uh, testimony that Mr. Nichols gave in the last round of hearings and therefore are appropriate rebuttal. And to the extent they're not, um, I'm going to allow them in my discretion, I'm going to exercise my discretion to allow that, uh, to come in. And again, as I said before, uh, we can talk about it at the end, but if Blue Triton still wants to, I am going to allow one last round. I think this will be it. It'll be just Mr. Nichols for Blue Triton will be the only rebuttal or sir, sir rebuttal witness for the next round. Um, and there will, I will talk about some page limits on that, but I think I will give him a chance uh, to testify in response to, uh, the, the matters that have come in. So, uh, and hopefully I, I've, I've found sometimes letting a witness say, hey, that's not what I said. Here's what I really meant. Can cover in five minutes what somebody otherwise can spend hours on cross-examination trying to get out of the other witness. So I think that's going to be a lot more efficient and I hope uh, Blue Triton will keep that in mind. I think a lot of times for a lot of these issues, simply having Mr. Nichols submit additional responsive testimony or responsive testimony will be a lot more efficient than dragging out cross-examination of each witnesses. So those are my rulings on Blue Triton's motion. Um, Ms. Frye, I see your hand. It was up. Where did you go? Do you still have a question? Go ahead, Ms. Frye. Good morning.
So if you're going to allow sir, sir rebuttal, we can't bring in an expert witness. Is that correct?
At this point, I, I think that will be the end of the, the matter. We've, we've gone back and forth that several times now. I, I think this has been, this round here has been parties' opportunities to submit responses to Mr. Nichols' uh, extensive testimony that he submitted during the rebuttal phase. Um, and I, I don't see that anything new. I, I don't think new issues are going to come up if I allow Mr. Nichols to respond. That's certainly at that point, we're going to tailor it to just responses to the new things that have come in. So Ms. Frye, unless there's some exceptional circumstances, I do not see any other witnesses that I will allow any other witnesses or have any other rounds of hearing.
Will we be able to raise this question again after this rebuttal, after we hear what Mr. Nichols says?
Yes. You may raise, you will be able to raise it again. But as I say, I, I think it's going to be limited to responding to the the testimony we're going to hear in this phase. And I think that's going to be the end. I mean, at some point we have to, we have to close the loop here. This could go on forever. I know everyone wants the last word, but anyway, save it for later. If you think he is, I'm, I'm not even sure he will submit responsive testimony, but if he does, and you think there's something new that you did not previously have a chance to address that you need to, you could bring it up at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, with that, I don't see any other hands. So, uh, we will proceed with the, um, the order of proceeding today will be, I'm going to have the prosecution team go first. Oh, Ms. Belenke, your, your hand is up. Please go ahead.
Yes, I had sent an email asking about scheduling Mr. Zidane's testimony. He's an independent expert. He was available. We, he was scheduled to be available during the original days the hearing was set for, and he is available still on those days. It would be
I'm going to cover that.
Oh, I see. Okay, great.
You, you you anticipated what I was going to say next. So thank you. Um, the order of proceeding for rebuttal evidence will be, uh, I will have the prosecution team go first. Excuse me, this is sir rebuttal evidence. The prosecution team will go first. Then Blue Triton and Story of Stuff Project. And Steve Lowe, Amanda Frye, Center for Biological Diversity will go last. Um, I have a schedule conflict tomorrow afternoon. So we will go all day today. And then tomorrow, just until noon. And then we'll start again on Wednesday. I'm, I'm hoping we can make good progress, but I certainly will, uh, respect Ms. Palenke's request that uh, if we finished everything else, we will start Center of Biological Diversity's testimony on Wednesday morning. We may not move that fast. I hope we do, but we may not. Um, so anyway, that's my plan, Ms. Palenke. So that should address your concern about that.
Well, I'm just, I, I don't want to be disruptive, but it would be really the best if we could have a time that he could start like Thursday morning if or something like that so that we know, because otherwise he has to be sitting waiting during the day, the whole day, Wednesday, which I understand everyone else's time is like that, but there's an independent expert and we would really appreciate, he doesn't work for us full time, unlike the other people who have been testifying for the other parties. And if we could give him a time, that would be very, very helpful.
All right, please bring that up again tomorrow toward the end of the morning proceeding. We'll see where we are on schedule. I, I am hoping we can wrap this up on Wednesday. And we'll have to go on Thursday or Friday, but I, I will do my best to help you with scheduling. I understand what you were saying. So, but let's see where we are. I will know a lot more by then as far as schedule goes than I do now.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, then as I say, we will go forward. Right now, my intent is that will be one more round just for Mr. Nichols. Uh, but if some other party believes that there is something else that needs to be addressed, we can talk about that. Frankly, um, we tried and submitted very little evidence for this round. So I don't think there's going to be very much Blue Triton new evidence to rebut. Um, but we will see where we are. And then, as I've said before, I will have, um, ask the parties to prepare and file written closing briefs and then objections, um, to any hearsay evidence that is cited in any other party's written closing brief. Um, and how I should, arguments regarding how I should apply government code section 11 513 subdivision D uh, to that evidence. So with that, we will proceed with the prosecution team. We have received exhibits PT 316 through 323. Um, and it appears that the prosecution team intends to call one sir rebuttal, um, witness Tomas Egger. Eggers, excuse me, Mr. Petroselli, is that correct? Is Mr. Eggers your only witness for this round?
That is correct, Mr. Lilly. Mr. Eggers is our only witness for this round.
All right. So Mr. Eggers, you are still under oath for this hearing. Um, is exhibit PT 316. In fact, you are sir rebuttal testimony for this hearing?
It is.
All right. And now regarding summer, summaries of the written proposed testimony for this round. Um, I'm very familiar now with the underlying facts. As you know, we did a site visit for two days. Uh, we've had two rounds of hearing, each of which lasted many days. Um, I've read everything, including I've read all of the new written, um, proposed testimony and associated exhibits that have come in. Uh, so frankly, I don't really need very much in the way of summaries. I, I think I understand it all. Mr. Eggers, your testimony, your written proposed testimony was quite clear. And I did read that. Um, if Mr. Petroselli wants uh, to have you summarize the key, briefly summarize the key points in your written testimony, I will allow him to do so, but I'm going to give a maximum of 15 minutes for that. And I really mean it. After 15 minutes, I'm going to cut off summaries of our summary of this written proposed testimony. So Mr. Petroselli, you may proceed.
Hey, Mr. Eggers, are you?
Ready.
Okay. Uh, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Tomas Eggers. I'm a water resource control engineer for the enforcement section of the Division of Water Rights. I'm here to summarize my written rebuttal testimony, which is offered into evidence as exhibit PT 316. First, Blue Triton has contended that its diversions are not subject to the board's permitting authority because they collect water at points located deep underground. However, the bird, the, the board has permitted and licensed many other spring diversions that use tunnels, boreholes and spring boxes methods like those used by Blue Triton. In my experience, they are common methods used for diverting water from springs. The diversions at issue in order WR 2019 dash 149, which were permitted, used boreholes that extended 700 to 800 feet into the ground. More than twice as far as any of Blue Triton's diversions. Second, Mr. Nichols testified that he didn't believe boreholes one and eight intercepted earlier boreholes. However, he described this very specifically. As in the new boreholes were not drilled directly into the prior boreholes. Regardless, it is clear from the reports of man and the hydrodynamics group that boreholes one and eight were engineered and drilled to intercept the same fracture network as the earlier generation of boreholes to continue diverting from the same springs. Third, Mr. Nichols testified that spring tunnel two was advanced into the hillside. But my review of Rose handwritten notes indicates that this was not the case. Rather, it was excavated with an open cut, basically an open trench and then covered. Can we put exhibit PT 322 on the screen?
Yes, uh, Ms. Mallon, please. Got to exhibit PT 322. All right, we have, we have the first page. Tell us what page you'd like us to scroll to.
Can we go to page two?
Page two, you should be able to. All right, and Ms. Mallon, maybe you can make it a little bigger. There we go. Thank you. All right, go ahead, Mr. Eggers.
Here. Here, on the right side, highlighted in red, Row writes, "Forms for Covered Tunnel in Open Cut." Next to the entry labeled "Spring Number Two." The term "forms" refers to wooden frames used to pour concrete. And "open cut" refers to the type of excavation that was used to remove loose material and expose the spring orifice. Now, let's look at page 16.
That's one six?
Correct.
Okay, one six, we will turn to. We have it.
Here, roughly in the middle of the page, to the right of the entry labeled "Spring Number Two" and highlighted in green, Row describes the work being done on Spring Two that day as backfilling roof. Uh, can we next look at PT 323?
We will put up PT 323. All right, we have PT 323 on the screen. We'll make it a little bigger. I recognize some of the people in this picture and the location. Go ahead.
This is a photograph I took during the site visit that corroborates Rose's notes. You can plainly see a mound with different, distinctly different vegetation above the approximate location of the tunnel. We can take that down now.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mullen. Please proceed.
Next, Mr. Nichols testified there was no clear evidence that indicated where the spring orifices may have been located relative to the tunnels and boreholes when they were developed. But Mr. Nichols also testified that the entire area surrounding boreholes 10 through 12 is essentially one big spring. Furthermore, based on the letters and reports by John F. Mann, Blue Triton's predecessors knew the locations of Springs 10 through 12, knew they augmented the flow of Strawberry Creek, and deliberately installed boreholes at this location to divert water from the springs. Now, I would like to discuss the shut-in tests conducted at boreholes 10, 11, and 12 in the Lower Spring Complex. Mr. Nichols indicated that water collection at the boreholes did not measurably affect surface water expressions. The respondent has conducted at least two sets of shut-in tests. One in 2017 and one in 2021, neither of which support Mr. Nichols' conclusion. The fundamental mechanics of the two tests were the same. First, you shut in the boreholes, then you allow water pressure to build up in the fractured rock feeding the springs. And finally, you monitor the effects that the increased water pressure has on the springs. The latter step can be done by measuring flow or by measuring some parameter that correlates with flow. For both the 2017 and 2021 tests, Haley and Aldrich used pismeters to measure water levels downstream of the boreholes. Any water level changes that corresponded with the shut-ins would be evidence of the borehole's influence on the springs. During the 2017 tests, whenever the boreholes were shut in, Haley and Aldrich measured a three-quarter inch increase in the water level in the stream below an actively flowing spring expression. They concluded that the boreholes were hydrologically connected to the springs because shutting in the boreholes 10 through 12 had caused changes to the water levels and surface water expression in the stream below the springs. During the 2021 test, Haley and Aldrich measured a greater water level increase of about an inch, but then concluded just the opposite, that the flow of Strawberry Creek is not affected by shutting in the boreholes because they did not detect any corresponding changes in stream flow. However, it does not follow that there were no corresponding changes in stream flow, only that Haley and Aldrich did not detect such changes. The absence of evidence is not evidence of absence because the reliability or weight of non-detect results depends on the detection limits and error margins of the methodology. As I will describe, the available information indicates that the methodology Haley and Aldrich used was probably not capable of detecting relevant changes in the stream flow. On top of that, the testing data for 2021 is presented in a misleading manner that obscures the results. Can we put BTB 7 on the screen and go to page 91?
All right, Ms. Mullen, please display BTB 7 and scroll to page 91. All right, and if you can just, yeah, make it big, that'd be great. All right, we have it. Go ahead.
Figure 24 is a graph of the following different types of data recorded during the 2021 shut-in testing. Borehole pressure and pismeter pressure, both shown in units of feet of water on the left axis, and stream flow shown in units of gallons per minute on the right axis. As can be seen in figure 24, the pressures recorded at borehole 10, which is the blue line, and borehole 12, which is the orange line, both increased tens of feet after the boreholes were shut in. Pressures within the north and south pismeters, on the other hand, represented here with gray and green lines, appear to be nearly featureless horizontal lines. The problem is that the scale of significant pressure changes for the pismeter readings is much, much smaller than the range of pressure changes displayed for the boreholes. Please note that the grid lines on this graph are at an interval of two feet. Can we please bring up page 757?
All right, Ms. Mullen, please, if this is exhibit BTB 7, and we'll go to page 757. All right, you may proceed, Mr. Eggers.
This figure displays the results of the 2017 shut-in test with graphs showing changes in the pismeter water level, wetted channel length, and spring flow reflect, respectively. I, that is, if we zoom out a little. But, uh, let's actually just stay focused on the first graph. The blue line is for pismeter data and is analogous to the gray and green lines on figure 24. Please note that the grid lines on this graph have an interval of two hundredths of a foot, just less than a quarter inch. During the 2017 shut-in test, we see that the pressure in the pismeter increased about three-quarters of an inch each time the boreholes were shut in. From this small but significant change, Haley and Aldrich concluded in 2017 that shutting in the boreholes caused the water level to increase at the spring, proving hydraulic connection between the two. In doing so, they also established that water level increases on the order of fractions of an inch are relevant. However, inch-sized changes are indistinguishable on figure 24. Can we please go back to page 91?
All right, exhibit BTB 7, page 91.
Just go to where we can see a little more of it.
Just scroll down a little bit, Ms. Mullen, so we can see the gray and green lines. All right.
The Y-axis scale on figure 24 with its two-foot intervals is far too big because it makes the one-inch scale changes deemed meaningful in the 2017 test indiscernible here. For example, we couldn't know from this graph that during the 2021 shut-in test, Haley and Aldrich had actually measured a water level increase in the south pismeter of about an inch, similar to the three-quarter inch increase observed in 2017. However, despite this apparent agreement between the 2021 and 2017 shut-in tests, the 2021 test's results are still unreliable for the reasons I'll now discuss. For the pismeters.
Just a time check, Mr. Eggers, three more minutes to wrap it up.
Okay. Haley and Aldrich stated that the 2021 pismeters serve as an analog for creek flow, but there's no evidence that this is so because Haley and Aldrich did not validate their methodology. That is, Haley and Aldrich did not report taking any steps to verify that the water level in the pismeters correlates with the flow of Strawberry Cree- Creek. Instead, the available data suggests that water levels in the pismeters do not correspond with stream flow. As we can see on figure 24, the flow of Strawberry Creek, as measured at Station 49, decreased over 40%, even while the water level in both pismeters showed no discernible change. Similarly, Haley and Aldrich stated that the water level in the south pismeter did not change during the initial shut-in period, even as Strawberry Creek's flow decreased another 20%. Based on available data, there's no correlation between the pismeter data and stream flow. So the 2021 pismeters do not appear to be valid analogues for the flow of Strawberry Creek. With respect to the Station 49 flow measurements in 2021, Haley and Aldrich added the equivalent of up to 42 acre feet a year upstream of the measurement point. This is a lot of water, but they couldn't detect it. During the second turnout period in 2021 testing, the unrestricted flow of water from boreholes 10 and 12 was released to a discharge point just above Station 49, but below the pismeters. Um, the two are about 250 feet apart, so the distance between the discharge point and the measurement point was not far, less than 250 feet. Um, yet despite adding up to 25 gallons per minute to the flow of the stream just above the measuring point, they measured less than half that amount, just 12.2 gallons per minute. For me, this raises red flags that there are significant unaccounted losses in the stream segment or that the measurement had significant error, either one suggesting that the testing methodology was incapable of reliably detecting relevant changes in the flow of the springs. But I can't know because there's no explanation. In summary, the 2017 shut-in tests indicate that extraction from the boreholes reduces the water level and therefore the flow at the Lower Spring Complex. The 2021 pismeter wrote, results appear to agree in so much as an even greater change in water level was reported, but this result is obscured by the grossly inappropriate scale of the only figure on which the 2021 pismeter data is presented. However, the agreement between the two pismeter results may only be coincidental because unlike the 2017 pismeter data, which were validated with stream flow observations, the 2021 pismeter data do not appear correlated with stream flow. So it's not even certain what they measure. Therefore, neither the 2017 nor the 2021 shut-in tests support Mr. Nichols' conclusion that extraction of the boreholes has no measurable effect on the flow of Springs 10 through 12. On the contrary, based on the available data, is more likely than not that the boreholes divert water from Springs 10 to 12. That concludes my summary.
All right, thank you, Mr. Eggers. Um, and Mr. Petrazelli, I want to alert you, uh, before we start cross-examination. On page three of Mr. Eggers' written proposed surrebuttal testimony, uh, paragraph four and five are referred to two exhibits um, from the FAHE proceeding that ultimately resulted in State Water Board Order WR 2019-0149, of those being Exhibits FAHE 27 and 71. Um, and you, um, um, in, in the written testimony, there are links, uh, to those. We don't like to have web links in our record uh, because the record lasts for a long time and web links change over time. Um, and also, we like to have a complete record. I mean, sometimes web links are unavoidable. We try to avoid them when possible. So I request, uh, that you, um, sometime during a break, uh, maybe like at noon, download and make PDFs of those. They already are PDFs, but basically, download them from the web links that you've listed here and then upload them um, to the, um, H O F T P folder for this matter, and just label those as PT 324 and PT 325. And then we will, um, add them to your exhibits, and of course, other parties may object uh, to those coming into evidence, but I would like to have PDF files of the documents in our record rather than web link. So can you do that, uh, during the noon break?
Yes, yes, I can. I was, um, we were recalling a previous discussion about document, about, uh, board records that are subject to notice that we wouldn't necessarily need to submit copies of. So we were trying to be, uh, you know, conservative with the amount of paper submitted. But if you prefer us to actually submit copies of those, we certainly can.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if that was confusing before. Uh, what I said was, and I still believe, uh, you do not need to submit as exhibits prior water board decisions and orders, those adopted by the board formally as decisions and orders. I mean, I look at those like reported court decisions, um, and those are always posted, and I don't think that's going to change, and, and there can be a lot of those. So that's, and I'm sorry if I was confusing about that, but I, I consider specific exhibits in another hearing to be in a different category. And I know um, over time, this wasn't one of our proceedings, but the Division of Water Rights may archive, uh, those hearing records or do something else, so that those web links are no longer accessible. So anyway, I'm sorry if there is confusion, but if you can upload those as PDFs, I think it will help us all. All right, thank you. And with that, and thank you, Mr. Eggers. So with that, let me just check on my script to make sure uh, we're in the right place here. Okay, so we're now ready for cross-examination of, uh, Mr. Eggers. Um, I, again, this was pretty limited uh, testimony, very limited topic. At this point, we're not allowing cross-examination to go beyond the scope of the direct examination, the way um, the government code allows for the first round of proceedings. I don't think we need to do that now. I'm not going to allow that. Uh, so with that, um, I will allow interested parties to conduct cross-examination questions, but I am going to put time limits on that. Um, and the time limits are going to be 30 minutes per party. And there's going to have to be a very strong demonstration of why more than 30 minutes is allowed uh, before I will allow more than that. So, who wants to conduct cross-examination, Mr. Eggers? Raise your hand, either the electronic way or the old way. So I see Mr. Sanders. All right, and who else? Mr. Low? Sorry, I'm looking around here in my tiles. Anybody else besides Mr. Sanders and Mr. Low? Don't see anybody else. All right, Mr., thank you, Mr. Low. You may put your electronic hand down. I've seen it. Um, all right, so Mr. Sanders, it's 10:08. Uh, you may proceed, as I said, we're
Mr. Lilly, I would prefer that Mr. Low go before, um, the respondents.
Um, well, I'm, I'm going to have you go first. That's the way I'd like to do it. Frankly, I think after you've completed yours, it may limit the, the need for how much Mr. Low needs to do. So, I, I'd like you to go first, and it's 10:09, so I'll have 30 minutes to proceed. Thank you.
Okay. Um, please bring up PT 316, page two.
All right, Ms. Mullen, please put up exhibit PT 316, page two. Okay, we have that on the screen now, and I have it in paper as well. Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Eggers, please read in paragraph three at line 21 and a half, the sentence beginning with "I searched."
"I searched the electronic water rights information system and identified 800 active appropriative permits and licenses whose listed water source is named, is a named or unnamed spring."
Do you have a list of the 800 active appropriative permits, um, that identifies the source as a named or unnamed spring? Did you prepare a list?
I know. I don't have it. I know. I don't have it still.
Okay. And of those 800 permits and licenses, how many were diversions by spring box?
I don't have an exact number for any of them.
Okay. And so the same answer would be diversions by spring holes?
Excuse me?
Do you know how many of those 800 were diversions by spring holes?
Excuse me, Mr. Sanders, we've always used the term boreholes before. I've never heard the term spring holes.
You're right. You're right. My apologies, boreholes. Of those 800 that you list, okay, thank you. Does E-RIMS list the method of diversion?
Generally speaking, it doesn't. There may be information available in in the documents available on E-RIMS.
Okay. In your testimony, you indicated that in Water Right Order 2019-0149, the State Water Board asserted its water right permitting authority over diversions from springs. Is that correct?
Correct.
Did the State Board require FAHIE to submit an application to appropriate water?
Correct.
They did require him?
He submitted an application.
He submitted an application. Did the State Board require him to do that?
To divert spring water from springs? You need to do that unless you have another type of right.
So he submitted the application voluntarily to be able to appropriate water?
I believe so. I don't know what you mean by voluntarily.
Well, you made the comment that the State Board asserted its water right jurisdiction over FAHIE. Is that, is that accurate?
Jurisdiction was confirmed in my understanding, but I'm not a lawyer.
Okay. Was that an enforcement case, the FAHIE case, an enforcement case about violation of permit terms?
That came up. Yes, I believe so.
Wasn't that the sole issue?
I'm not a lawyer, but I don't know if that could be considered the sole issue.
Okay. When FAHIE submitted its application, did the State Water Board permitting staff perform an assessment of whether it had permitting jurisdiction over the diversion?
I'm could you repeat that question?
When FAHIE submitted his applications, did the State Water Board permitting staff perform an assessment of whether the State Water Board had permitting jurisdiction over the diversion?
Yeah, I would say that that is a part of an application process. I'm not sure if there's some sort of standalone assessment. I'm not.
Can you point me to anything?
Wait, 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 Mr. Sanders, you're still talking, but.
My apologies. I thought he was done.
Sorry, I'm not intimately familiar with the permitting process that happened for that case. I didn't work on that case personally.
So you don't know whether the board performed an assessment of whether that was within their permitting jurisdiction?
Well, I mean, I don't know if there's some sort of independent assessment, a standalone report or something like that, if that's what you're asking. But I know that, you know, part of the application process would be to determine whether it's something that we can even permit. So if somebody wanted to take water, say, out of the ocean, it wouldn't get very far, but it wouldn't say that there was like a a separate assessment, so to speak.
Does the State Board have any term or condition in the permit that it issues to indicate that it has permitting jurisdiction over the diversion?
Objection. I, this goes beyond the scope of Mr. Eggers' testimony. I mean, he testifies that, you know, the diverter at, the diverter who was the subject of that hearing had a permit that's in the order. It's stated in the order. His testimony is not about why the diverter in that proceeding had a permit or how he was issued a permit. And specifically about the nature of the diversion works used by the diverter in that proceeding.
The objection is overruled. I think the combination of the testimony by Mr. Eggers about this one order and the 800 active permits and licenses makes Mr. Sanders' questions appropriate. Go ahead. You may repeat the question if you want to, Mr. Sanders.
Is there any permit term that indicates that the State Water Board assessed whether it had permitting jurisdiction over FAHIE?
Could we look at the permit? I don't know. I could, I could study it if you'd like, but.
Mr. Eggers, we do have to wrap this up. Just state the answer to Mr. Sanders' question to the best of your knowledge as you stand here today. And if you say, I don't know, I would have to look at the permit, that is fine.
I would have to look at the permit.
Okay. In your testimony, you indicated the diversions in the FAHIE case were through boreholes even longer than those at BTB. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So please bring up PT 316, page three.
All right. I think that's the next page on the screen we'll put up. Oh, I'm sorry. You said Exhibit PT 316, page three?
Yes, please.
All right. So Ms. Mullen, if you could get that on the screen. Thank you. Okay, there we go. We have page three on the screen now. Go ahead.
And Mr. Eggers, please read the sentence at line 15 and a half that begins with "this meant that" that meant that, sorry.
That meant that the diverters boreholes collected water 700 to 800 feet from the natural spring orifice.
Okay. Now, Mr. Lilly, I would like to bring up FAHIE 27 that you were just talking with Mr. Petrazelli about.
Okay, and that's, that is a logistical issue here. You certainly have a right to do that. Here's what I propose we do. Can you save your questions for Exhibit FAHIE 27? And if you have 71 as well, and ask your other questions, and then we'll try to get those uploaded and put into our record in a break. And then I'll certainly will, you know, give you an opportunity to go back and ask questions about those. I just don't want Ms. Mullen to have to go to the web to get a web link at this point, but we will circle back to those.
This is a relatively critical question, but I,
Okay. Well, do you have any other lines of questioning?
I do. I have numerous lines of questioning.
All right. Well, let's just save the line of questioning regarding these exhibits that, you know, and I understand you may have some that aren't specifically concerning those exhibits, but if it's in the same line of questioning. So if you can do cover your other lines of questioning, and then I will give you an opportunity to circle back to this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Eggers, is your testimony that responding conducted two sets of shut-in and turnout tests with markedly different conclusions?
That's correct.
Do you understand the purpose for the two shut-in tests conducted at boreholes 10, 11, 12 described in BTB 7?
Yes.
Were the criteria for those described in BTB 7?
What do you mean by that?
What were the objectives of those, each of those tests?
I believe that the objective of the 2017 shut-in test was to demonstrate hydraulic connection between the borehole and the spring. And the 2021 test was to determine how much if shutting in the boreholes affected the stream flow of Strawberry Creek at the U.S. Forest Service's the control points for the SUP.
And the 2021 shut-in tests, were those based on the adaptive management plan?
Could you repeat that?
The 2021 shut-in tests that you referred to, were, was that testing done pursuant to the adaptive management plan?
Um.
So objection, I'm sorry, objection, it calls for speculation. It also calls for hearsay to the extent that Mr. Eggers is relying on the report, reported objectives of the AMP from Mr. Nichols' testimony.
All right, I'm going to sustain the objection. Mr. Sanders, I think you can cure this issue by simply asking him what his understanding is regarding whether the 2021 tests were conducted for the purpose of the Forest Service Adaptive Management Plan. I think if you limit it to asking him about his understanding, we can probably get through this.
That's fine. I'm fine. Is there a difference in the sensitivity required by each set of those test criteria? The 2017 and the 2021?
Well, I mean, you know, it depends. It depends on, yeah, the quality of of a, of a test, a shut-in test, and whether or not, you know, what level of sensitivity you want it to have depends on, yeah, it's the quality that you're looking for. Clearly, in the 2017 test, it was designed to be very sensitive. And the 2021 test was designed to be very insensitive.
When you say insensitive, meaning you're talking about larger volumes that you're dealing with? Is that correct?
No, I'm saying that in 2017, the tests were designed to, to be very sensitive to get a signal. And in the 2021 test, they were not looking to get a signal.
I'm sorry, you're saying that Haley and Aldrich was attempting to not get results?
They were not looking for a very sensitive test. They didn't design it the same way. They didn't take steps that they took in the 2017 test to get sensitive results. The pismeter in the 2017 test was put right at a flowing spring expression. The 2021 test, they were installed kind of who knows where. They, in the 2017 test, they did hand measurements right at a flowing expression. 2021 test, they used a stream gauge that was, you know, farther away, clearly not sensitive to the flow. And also one that was over a mile away. And used those results from those two flow stations to make conclusions that they weren't appropriate for.
Is it your testimony that in the 2021 shut-in and turnout testing, Haley and Aldrich did not observe a measurable effect in the respondent's water collection on surface water expression?
Could you show me what you're referring to?
Sure. Can we bring up PT 316, page seven, paragraph 12?
And you're referring to the first line?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, that was their conclusion, that they, they stated several times that they did not observe something.
Okay, that, okay. In the 2017 shut-in test, did Haley and Aldrich conclude there was a measurable effect on surface water expression?
Yes.
And what was that measurable?
I'm sorry, objection. I believe that was a misstatement because Mr. Sanders asked what was observed in 2017.
That's correct. I did.
Okay, my apologies.
The objection is overruled. I think the question was appropriate and the answer was clear.
Was the measurable effect in 2017 shut-in test an increase in the wetted surface?
If I recall correctly, they had, actually, if you bring up the graphs on, the graphs on page 757 of BTB 7, that has everything right there. So there's three graphs on this page. The first one is the water level in the pismeters below this spring expression. The second one is the length of the wetted surface channel. And the last one is hand-measured flow, where they measured the flow. And they also described the movement of the spring expression, that there was more wetted channel, and there were pools in the channel that came and went in response to the shut-in tests. So yes, there was multiple lines of evidence that the flow in Strawberry Creek was affected and influenced by shut-in tests.
Did the 2017 shut-in test produce any measurable flow in Strawberry Creek?
I think if we look there at that last graph there, we see what the measurement, the change in the flow in response to the shut-ins.
The, I'll come back to this one in just a second. Did BTB provide the prosecution team with a draft testing plan in partial response to the 2017 ROI?
I believe we saw, I guess you say a draft plan? Yeah, probably. Yeah.
Did you or any member of the prosecution team provide comments to BTB of that draft testing plan?
We had a meeting with BTB and the consultants, and we expressed some concerns during the meeting.
When was that meeting?
You know, I don't remember at the top of my head.
Did that draft testing plan propose testing at boreholes 10, 11, and 12?
I don't recall. I believe that was what we were interested in, testing at sevens and 10, 11, and 12. And what I recall is that the draft plan avoided proposing any testing at those, but I knew that we're going to do testing as part of the SUP. So I don't actually recall if the one that they proposed to us was how much it included. I can review it if you like.
No, thank you. We're fine. Did the 2017 ROI allege that water collection at boreholes 10, 11, 12 was within the jurisdiction of the water board?
I believe what it said is up to 100%.
Did it make any?
Wait, wait, wait. Excuse me, Mr. Sanders, let him finish his answer.
It, basically, we didn't have enough information, and that's why the recommendation in the 2017 ROI was to do additional investigation.
Did the 2021 revised ROI allege that water collected in boreholes 10, 11, 12 was within the permitting jurisdiction of the State Board?
That was the same issue. There was no studies done between 2017 and 2021 that we are aware of. That was the same issue. There was no studies done between 2017 and 2021 that we are aware of that gave enough information for that.
So, so you're making a new allegation today in your written testimony? Is that correct?
Um, no, I don't know if it would be a new allegation. I believe it said up to 100, or up to 100% may not be within the board permitting authority, but that obviously has the possibility that it's less than 100%, in which case it wouldn't be new.
Was the board asserting any jurisdictional permitting authority at the time it issued its draft cease and desist order in 2021?
I think the cease and desist order speaks for itself.
Okay. In PT, let's bring up PT 316, page 7, paragraph 11. And then on line, can you read the sentence on line eight that says, according to the data?
According to the data depicted on figure 24, the flow of Strawberry Creek decreased from more than 70 gallons per minute to about 40 gallons per minute between March and April, but neither pismeter detected any change in the water level during that period.
Okay. Can I bring up BTB 7, page 91?
Okay, we'll put up exhibit BTB 7, page 91. And Mr. Sanders, while Ms. Mullen is doing that, I wanted to let you know that my staff has downloaded, it's Fahey, exhibit Fahey 27 and 71, and they are now in the PT exhibit folder as PT exhibits 324 and 325. So again, I'm sorry if I've disrupted your testimony, your cross-examination some, but whenever you want to circle back to that, they are now available for you to, to ask questions about.
Okay. Thank you. When you said the creek flow decreased in, in your testimony, are you talking about the green and gray lines on this figure?
No.
What, what exactly are you referring to when you say the, the flow decreased?
So, the flow measured at TRBF XS 49, which I referred to as Station 49, is there on this graph as dots, green dots, and the, and they are gallons per minute, which is on the right axis.
And, and so what are the flow, what are the sources of flow in Strawberry Creek at these locations? At the green, yellow, and blue dots?
Well, how do you want me to break up the sources? Precipitation is the source of the flow.
Is there, is there surface? Surface flow? Yeah, I mean, this is surface flow and, and spring water flow, is that correct?
This, according to Haley and Aldrich, is the flow of Strawberry Creek, including all contributions upstream.
And what would cause, I'm sorry, I apologize. And what would cause the creek flow to decrease from March to April?
I don't know.
Is it possible that the creek flow is decreasing when the boreholes are shut in due to a natural hydrologic cycle?
Action to the extent this calls for speculation.
Overruled, the witness can testify to the extent of his knowledge, and if he doesn't know, he can say he doesn't know.
Do you repeat the question?
Is it possible that creek flow is decreasing when the boreholes are shut in during March and April solely due to the natural hydrologic cycle?
Is it possible that they're only decreasing because of the hydrologic cycle? I, I, yeah, it's possible.
Thanks. Is a pismeter used to measure groundwater elevation, or is it to measure creek flow?
Repeat, is a pismeter used to, was it, you mean in this case, in general?
In this case.
In this case, they stated that they installed these pismeters as an analog for creek flow.
What does a, a pismeter measure?
Well, it depends on the instrument you use to take readings, but the pismeter is for the piesometric head.
A piesometric head of a groundwater well?
A pismeter.
Which is a, is a pismeter a boring in the ground in which you're measuring changes in elevation of the groundwater?
No, not always. A pismeter measures piesometric head, so in a confined aquifer, for example, the elevation of the groundwater doesn't change, but the pressure changes, which is the piesometric head.
In this case, was the pismeter being used to measure groundwater levels adjacent to this, the creeks?
I don't know what these pismeters were actually measuring. The places where they were installed, it didn't describe why or how they were installed, so I'm not sure what they're measuring.
Can the creek flow change independent of the groundwater level?
Action calls for speculation.
Overruled, this witness clearly has expertise to answer the question.
Could you repeat that?
Can the creek flow change independent of the groundwater levels that are adjacent to the creek?
Adjacent where? I mean, that's, that depends. It depends on exactly, it depends on exactly where these things are located. You're talking about a subsurface environment, you don't know if it's hydraulically connected to the creek or not.
If a creek is not solely dependent on groundwater contribution, would you expect creek flow to be able to change independent of adjacent groundwater levels?
Repeat that?
If a creek flow?
A creek flow?
If a creek is not, is independent of groundwater contributions, would you expect a change in groundwater levels that are different or that wouldn't change when you have a change in creek flow?
I'm sure, I don't think that got any better for me. Could you rephrase that?
Mr. Sanders, it probably would be good if you clarified, are you asking this question just sort of generically for pismeters and creeks, or are you asking this specifically for the creek in the vicinity of boreholes 10, 11, and 12, and the two pismeters that are there? Because I, I'm certainly envisioning those, which we saw during the site visit, but your, your question may be more general, so please restate it either as a general question or as a specific question.
Sure. With regard to the testing that was done by Haley Aldrich, could the creek flow change independent of the adjacent groundwater levels?
Where do you mean by adjacent?
The pismeters that were used by the Haley and Aldrich study?
I don't know, because those pismeters were not validated in any way. They, they do not seem to, to be analogous to the creek flow, which is concerning.
In
And Mr. Lilly, we have just over 30 minutes on our, on our own time check.
I'm keeping track of the time, don't worry, and I will ask Mr. Sanders at some point for where he is and where he's going, but I'm going to let him complete this line of questions before I do.
One more question that I'm going to circle back to our the earlier documents. So the, the figure that's up here, which is page 91 of BTB 7, do the green and gray lines shown on this figure show any change in groundwater levels during the testing period?
What do you describe as the testing period?
Is there the entirety of the green line? Does it show changes in groundwater levels on this figure?
At the end of the green line, there is appears to be some wavering in the line. That's other than that, there, as I testified, nearly featureless horizontal lines.
And that wavy line would indicate a change in groundwater levels?
It indicates a change in pressure measured in feet of water.
Thank you.
It doesn't necessarily mean groundwater levels.
Does a pismeter?
Reads pressure.
Of water?
Of
Based on the level of water in the well or in the, in the pismeter itself?
That would be the ideal, but pismeters can also pick up atmospheric pressure if they have transducers, which these did.
Okay, I'll go to that real quick. Is there a hang on, real quick, I apologize. Let me, let me ask you, go back a second. Do you understand the difference between a vented transducer and a non-vented transducer?
I do.
And what's the principal benefit in using a vented transducer to measure water levels?
The benefit would be to attempt to remove the influence of atmospheric pressure.
And so if, if a vented transducer is used, you wouldn't have to account for atmospheric pressure, is that correct?
If it were working correctly, that is the idea.
Thank you. Please bring up PT 316, page 7.
Okay, so at Mr. Sanders, we I, I, I do want to find out how much more time you have, and I, and I, I'm going to point out that this, one of the reasons I advised the parties that I would be allowing Mr. Nichols to respond to this, is I think a lot of these points you can make far more efficiently by having Mr. Nichols testify, no, in response, here's what I did, and here's why, or here's why I disagree, rather than trying to extract something out of Mr. Eggers. So with that comment, what is your request for additional time, and what topics do you plan to cover here?
I with the, with the knowledge that we are able to have Mr. Nichols testify, I will likely be able to avoid any additional questions, with the exception of the questions that are addressing what is now going to be PT 324.
All right, so if we get, if we do that, will that be the, then you'd be able to complete your line of cross-examination here?
I believe so, and I, I, I would request that I have a, a moment to talk with my colleagues when I finish, or if we wanted to take a break now and, and I confer with them, and then to finish my questions.
Let's go ahead and put up PT 324, have you do your questions about that, and then I'll, I'll, we'll see where we are as far as, you know, wrapping up. But just for the record, my staff went to the web links that are in Mr. Eggers' testimony, which is PT 316 on page 3, at footnotes 3 and 4, and downloaded exhibit Fahey 27, which we have labeled as PT 324, and downloaded exhibit Fahey 71, which we have labeled PT 325. Thank you, Mr. Waldridge, for doing that, and we will now put up PT 324 on the screen.
I don't need that, I apologize, Mr. Lilly, I don't need that quite yet, but I will need it, so, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mall, you go ahead and take it down, but have it ready.
So let me go back to, I think, where we were, and and, and Mr. Eggers, you testified that the diversions in the Fahey case were through boreholes even longer than those at BTB, is that correct?
Correct.
So and I, again, let, okay, let's go ahead and bring up that PT 324.
Okay. We will put up exhibit PT 324, which, as I said before, was exhibit Fahey 27 in the proceeding that ultimately led to order WR 2019-0149, and we have page 1 of that, go ahead.
Okay. Is PT 324 the water right application number 31491? Please go to page 2. That would help.
That's what it appears to be.
And this application was submitted by G. Scott Fahey?
That appears to be correct.
And, and again, Mr. Eggers, I know this is the first time you've seen this document with it labeled as PT 324, but this is, in fact, the PDF file that you cited in your testimony. So, and you can, you can assume that I have complete confidence my staff has done that accurately, so this is not a new document, this is a document recited in your testimony. And, go ahead, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, and Sugar Pine Water Company is the business entity that's operated by Mr. Fahey, is that correct?
I think so.
Thanks. And the sources of the water for this application are identified as the Marco Spring and the Polo Spring, is that correct?
Yes.
In the exhibits that you identified in your testimony, Fahey 27, can you show me where it establishes the completed borehole lengths for this application?
Yeah, I think if we go down further. Going, I think we need.
The, Mr. Eggers, your testimony at line, on page 3, at line 14 and 1/2, cites to exhibit Fahey 27, page 18, do you think we should go there?
Um, yeah, we could go there.
I don't know, Ms. Mall, if you can get to page 18, that might I don't know, Ms. Mall, if you can get to page 18, that might save us a little time here. Okay, do you think this is, in fact, the page that you intended to cite here?
I think so. There's I was actually thinking of another page, but I think this probably has it as well. Yeah, the maximum boring length will be 800 feet.
Does that say, does that say will be, as in future tense?
Yes, that's correct.
So does does anything in your testimony indicate the completed borehole lengths?
I don't know.
I'm I'm sorry, was that I don't know or or no?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Lilly, at this time, I'd like to introduce an impeachment document. And we're going to identify it as BTB 40.
Okay, have you uploaded that to your exhibit folder?
I don't know whether we have or not yet, Mr. Lilly. I was just made aware of this document this morning. And so I don't know whether it's been uploaded yet or not.
All right. Well, let me check and see if we can find it. And Mr. Waldridge or Mr. Anderson, you can just speak up if you know. See if I can get it here. I don't see anything in the Blue Triton upload folder. So do you know if your staff has uploaded it yet?
I do not know. I I if I can ask them to to, I know it was a relatively big document.
Okay. I'd rather they upload it before we take a break so we can confirm we've gotten it. And then we'll take a break so we can move it over and everyone else can look at it. But I think uploading is going to be better than email, if it's a big doc.
Yeah.
Mr. Lilly. Mr. Lilly, I I apologize for interrupting. I just contacted our office and we can get it uploaded. It's going to take a couple of minutes. It had not been done yet. Apologies for that.
All right, well, just go ahead and we're going to just wait. And so, Miss, while we're doing that, though, Mr. Sanders, is this going to be your last line of questioning concerning this new exhibit?
It is, Mr. Lilly.
And and Mr. Lilly, could we have at least, you know, a few minutes to look at this impeachment exhibit and see what it is before?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Don't worry. That's what I said.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I I just, I'm going to take a break, but I want to confirm we've gotten it before we take the break so we can have a productive break. That's sort of, maybe that's an oxymoron, but that's the way things work in this business. Okay, it's still not there, so I'm going to wait and just see if it gets here. All right, and if somebody from the Blue Triton team can let me know when your staff advises you it's been uploaded. Because we haven't we haven't gotten it yet. At least I don't see it here yet. And just for future reference, if people have impeachment exhibits in the future, please upload them ahead of time. You can upload them to your upload folders and advise us that you have done so, and we can decide when when to move them over. I understand there's some strategy involved here, but it's really unfortunate for us to have to waste time while this is being done now, when this could have been done before.
Mr. Lilly, there, I, with all due respect, and I, we, this was not strategy. We were made aware of these documents this morning. There, they came to us in five pieces. My staff's been working to consolidate them into a single document, and we are working as quickly as we can.
And Mr. Lilly, Mr. Sanders, I apologize for interrupting. I've spoken to the representative at our office who's been working on this. And the problem has been that the state board site is not allowing her to upload it. Is what she's telling me. She keeps getting an error message and it won't let it go. And she's quite familiar with the process and has been able to upload things very successfully throughout this entire proceeding. So we seem to be having snafu.
And I think Ms. Doney said she had a problem before with uploading something this morning. How how many megabytes is this, Ms. Grady? Is this something you can email?
It's it's 33 megabytes, Mr. Lilly.
Okay, it might. Why don't you try emailing it to the AHO email address? I mean, if we can get it, we can move it over. So let's see, I, we might be able to take 33 megabytes. I'm not sure. But can you have somebody try to email it to us?
We will certainly do that, Mr. Lilly.
I guess we have to remind ourselves that technology is not perfect. We come to rely on it. And let's see if we can get it by email. That'll be a backup way. This is why I didn't want to take the break until we've confirmed we've received it.
Just a question, Mr. Lilly, if this is going to be a lengthy or voluminous document, you know, I object to the introduction of surprise evidence. And even if you admit it, I would ask that we ask, or that you direct Blue Triton to direct us to the relevant portions of that exhibit.
I was planning to do that. So thank you. I'm not going to ask Mr. Eggers to read a lengthy document if Mr. Sanders is only going to ask questions about one or two pages of that. So let's see if we can get it first. That's our first goal here. I'm checking our email. The AHO email inbox. I don't see it yet. But Ms. Grady or Mr. Sanders, let us know when your staff has in fact emailed it.
Oh, they're trying to right now, Mr. Lilly.
And Mr. Lowe, while we're waiting, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Yes, other than the technical issue, it doesn't seem right to me that we had to rush our exhibits to get them in on time. And and we could have done a lot better job and and to now introduce any new stuff at this time seems totally inappropriate, in my opinion. Thank you.
All right, well, this, this, we do normally allow parties to offer where we call impeachment exhibits to ask other, but ask adverse witnesses questions about them. But let's see what the document looks like, and then we'll figure out where we go from there. Ms. Grady, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Yes, I just want to let you know that it has been emailed to the AHO address and our colleague is attempting to email it to the entire service list, but because it's 33.
Okay, yeah, you know, if we can, if we can get it, we'll put it onto the FTP folder. It may take a little while for it to come through. So you don't necessarily need to email it to everyone on the AHO or the the email list for this matter. Okay, we've gotten it. All right, so somebody from my staff will save this to the Blue Triton Hearing Exhibit Folder so that then everybody can download it. And if, I don't know, whoever wants to do that, maybe Mr. Waldridge, you've been handling this. Can you copy this over to the Blue Triton Exhibit Folder, please, and then let me know when you've done that?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
And and Mr. Lilly, to to save everyone time, we are going to be focusing on Figure 7 and Figure 9.
Okay, thank you.
That document.
And and Mr. Sanders, what pages are those on?
Page 23, and my apologies, Mr. Petrazzoli, page 23 and 25 of BTB 40.
Yeah, those are the PDF page numbers.
Yes.
Just takes a minute to move files that are this big. We're getting there. At least we have it now, so I think we can make progress.
Uh, Mr. Lilly, it looks like it's it's up now.
Okay, let me just double check. Okay. At least internally, I've got it. So it looks pretty good. So what we're going to do oh, and it looks like Ms. Slomsky, the assistant at Mr. Sanders and Ms. Grady's office has emailed it to everyone on the email service list as well. Thank you, Ms. Slomsky. So you can get it two different ways. You can either get it by email, your email, that's all of you, or you can download it from the AHO FTP folder in the Blue Triton Exhibit Folder, exhibit BTB 40. And Mr. Sanders has advised us, thank you, Mr. Sanders, that he's going to ask questions about Figures 7 and 9, which are on PDF page numbers 23 and 25. So I'm about to take a break, but Ms. Frye, your hand is up. Go ahead.
I just wanted to be added to the list of people that can, that are considering cross-examination.
Okay, well, well, I will consider that after Mr. Lowe has completed his questioning. Thank you for letting me know.
Thank you.
Well, you should do your hands up. Is that a relic or is your hand still up? You're on, there you go. Okay, your hand is down. All right, so it's 11:06. We needed a morning break anyway. So we will take a break until 11:20. That'll be 14 minutes. That should be enough time for Mr. Eggers to get familiar with this report and these two figures. So we will be back at 11:20. It's a short break, but we've had a short morning and I'll, we will plan to take a noon break, a lunch break around noon, depending on where we are. We'll promise this, but that's my goal. All right, it's 11:20. I see the court reporter is back. And it looks like everyone else is coming back. I'll give everyone just a moment. We definitely need Mr. Petrazzelli and Mr. Eggers. All right. Just gonna give one moment to see if Mr. Lowe is going to join us right away, otherwise we'll get started. There's Mr. Lowe. All right, so Mr. Petrazzelli, have you and Mr. Eggers have had a chance to review Exhibit BTB 40?
So I was able to look at the, I was able to look at the referenced pages. Um, I have not discussed this with Mr. Eggers, other than to be sure he got the document and knew what pages to look at.
Okay, well, that's good. You're not supposed to discuss impeachment exhibits with your witnesses before they answer questions about them. So let's go ahead. Mr. Eggers, have you had a chance to look at Exhibit BTB 40?
Um, I've looked at uh, Figure 7 and Figure 9.
All right. All right, Mr. Sanders, um, do you want us to put Exhibit BTB 40 up on the screen?
Yes, please.
All right, Ms. Mullin, please post Exhibit BTB 40 and then uh, Mr. Sanders, you may start your questioning. All right, we have exhibit, what we've now labeled as Exhibit BTB 40 up on the screen.
And, and Mr. Eggers, can you please read the title of this document?
Uh, hydrogeologic study of Marco and Polo Springs diversion project.
Thank you.
Sections 15 and 22, Township 2 North, Range 17 East, Tuolumne County, California.
And, and I'm gonna just interject here before, excuse me, Mr. Sanders. But Mr. Eggers, have you ever seen this document before?
I have not.
All right, Mr. Sanders, you may proceed.
Thank you.
And Mr. Lilly, can we get some degree of authentication, like what this is, where this came from, how it was obtained?
I, I think that would be appropriate. I mean, I certainly have no doubt that this is not a fabricated document, that this is a report that in fact was prepared by Geo Resource Management. But Mr. Sanders, I think it would be good if you just for the record, provided some background as to where this came from.
Sure, Mr. Lilly, it's my understanding that, uh, this document was provided to us directly from Mr. Fahy and it was prepared on his behalf.
Okay. That, that I think is sufficient background, so you may proceed with your questioning. Please go ahead.
And Mr. Eggers, um, do you see that it says it was prepared by Sugar Pine Spring Water LP? Is that correct?
No. It says prepared for.
My apologies.
Not by.
You're right. So it was prepared for Sugar Prime, Sugar Pine Spring Water LP.
That's what the document indicates.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to, so, um, Figure 7, which I believe is ETB 40, page 21?
I think it's page 23. Ms. Mullin, please go to page 23.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll just state for the record, this is Figure 7 of this exhibit and a caption of the figure says diagramic cross-section of completion details at Marco Spring Orifice. And there's a, a drawing and a scale at the bottom. So go ahead, Mr. Sanders.
Mr. Eggers, do you agree that this is the details of the Marco Spring? Um, it, that it identifies the Marco Spring Orifice and it's the completion details?
Objection calls for speculation. Witness has testified he's never seen the document before and hasn't had a chance to read it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, oh, I'm gonna sustain the objection and ask Mr. Sanders to restate the question in terms of asking the witness about his understanding, if any, about this exhibit. And if, and Mr. Sanders, if he doesn't have any understanding of the exhibit, I think you are entitled to ask him a hypothetical question. He certainly has qualified himself as an expert witness, but I think you have to do one or the other. Either if he doesn't have under understanding, it's gotta be a hypothetical question.
And, and Mr. Lilly, uh, could Mr. Sanders qualify his question based on the degree to which, you know, Mr. Eggers has had an opportunity to review this document and become familiar with it?
Well, I, I don't think he has to do that. I think what I've said is sufficient. I mean, the record is clear that Mr. Eggers has had about 10 minutes to look at this figure. And with that, Mr. Sanders, you may proceed with your question.
Is it your understanding that this figure was the completion details of the Marco Spring?
Um, I can only read what the title of the figure is. I have no knowledge of this other than that.
Okay. Um, there's a scale at the bottom. Is that correct?
There is an approximate scale at the bottom.
Okay.
It's not actually a scale.
An approximate scale at the bottom. And the entire length of that scale is how long?
It says 10 and 20 feet of the two markings on there.
Okay. And do you see the, um, on the figure above, on the lower right portion of this diagram, it says diversion inlet.
I see that.
About how long would that pipe be approximately based on the scale at the bottom of the page?
I don't know.
Your Honor, I'm sorry, Mr. Lilly, I object to this evidence because it appears to be an attempt to offer new evidence. It doesn't seem to be appropriate impeachment in that Mr. Eggers is unfamiliar with the document and he, they're having him read portions of it in an attempt to offer this into evidence, but I mean, what is the difference in them offering this or offering a brand-new report by Mr. Nichols at this point?
Well, I'm gonna overrule that objection. Um, but again, I, I think, I mean, clearly, Mr. Sanders, your witness does not have any prior knowledge of this, so I think about all you're gonna be able to ask him is something to the effect of assuming hypothetically that this is an accurate description of the completion details of the Marco Spring Orifice and then ask your question. I mean, that's, that's about it. He certainly cannot authenticate this exhibit and no one else has, so I think that's the only line of questioning that's gonna be appropriate here. But with that qualification, please go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Assuming this is an accurate depiction of the Marco Spring, what is the approximate length of the pipeline at the bottom of the page?
I don't.
Bottom of the figure?
Go ahead and answer, Mr. Eggers. I think you started to, but he hadn't finished the question, so state your answer again.
Excuse me, I don't know.
Is it 800 feet?
It doesn't appear to be, but I don't know.
Is it less than 40 feet?
I don't know.
Does this um, in the, um, can you read the the, the text on the left side that has, um, the three inch?
Um, three inch, uh, it usually means diameter, that symbol, HDPE pipe. And below that, I can't really see it that well.
Can we, um, blow that up?
Well, we'll magnify it, wanted. There we go.
Solid. Okay, I see it now. Solid end to end.
Okay. Would that indicate that there's any perforation of this pipe?
And, and, excuse me, Mr. Sanders, at this point, I'm I'm gonna I'm gonna stop, direct you to go to a different line of questioning, because at this point, he's not really anymore qualified to interpret this figure than any of the rest of us, I don't think, unless you can focus some question that, that relies on his specialized knowledge.
I, I'm just asking if, if he understands this to be a solid pipeline with no perforations. His testimony was to the effect that there was a hundred feet of slotted screen and seven hundred feet of solid pipe that was this, this particular spring.
Okay, so just ask him what his understanding is based on his review of this figure. That's fine. Maybe you did before. If you did, I apologize, but go ahead and just ask him that question again.
Mr. Eggers, do you understand this to be a solid pipe with no perforations?
Objection, relevance. Again, there's no indication that this document is a final document, that it pertains to any pipeline that was referenced in the actual Fahy case, that it, I, I don't understand why it's relevant.
Objection is overruled. That goes to the weight of the evidence, not the admissibility. You may go ahead.
And I'm also objecting on the basis that this appears to be offering new testimony that could be offered as source or rebuttal. And the witness's state testimony on page three, roughly line thirteen and a half, does say that this was, that the borehole depths described were proposed.
All right.
Testify about what was built.
All right, those objections are overruled. I, I mean, this, the final construction of the, these facilities at this spring clearly is relevant to order WR, the State Water Board's order WR twenty nineteen dash zero one four nine, um, which Mr. Eggers has brought up, has opened the door on that. So the line of questioning is appropriate. The problem we're all having, though, Mr. Sanders, is this witness doesn't have any special, any particular knowledge of this report beyond any of the rest of us, so you can ask him questions about his understanding, or what his interpretation would be, assuming this is an accurate depiction of the figure, but beyond that, there's really nothing more he's gonna be able to do with this figure for us.
Um, Mr. Eggers, if this figure is accurate, would you consider your testimony to still be accurate?
If this figure is accurate, it appears to show a pipeline that is buried and doesn't connect to anything. That's, if it's accurate, I don't even know what this is.
Okay. Can we move on to BTB forty, page twenty-three?
I think you wanna go to page twenty-five next, if you wanna go to figure nine.
Twenty-three and twenty-five?
Yeah, this was, this was PDF page twenty-three. We'll go to PDF page twenty-five, which is a cop, which isn't, I'll try again, is figure nine from this same report, and the heading is "diagramic cross-section of completion details at Polo Spring Orifice." So, subject to all the same admonitions, Mr. Sanders, you may proceed. Mr. Eggers, questions about this figure?
Um, Mr. Eggers, can you please read, um, what is the description of this figure?
"Diagrammatic cross-section of completion details at Polo Spring Orifice."
Thank you. And again, there's a scale at the bottom. Is that correct?
There is.
And that scale is roughly twenty feet in total?
That's what it says.
Thank you. And on the, assuming this figure is accurate, does it show a diversion inlet um, on the lower right portion of the figure?
As I said, I don't know what this shows, if it's accurate. It appears to show a wedge of compacted soil over a twenty-foot-long pipe that doesn't connect to anything at all. It's just a twenty-foot-long length of pipe, but I don't know what it shows.
And this pipeline over on the left, can you please describe the description where it says the three-inch diameter? Can you read that for me, please?
Three-inch diameter, HDPE pipe, solid end to end.
And assuming this depiction is accurate, that would indicate that there are, um, no perforations in this pipeline?
I don't know that.
Is the approximate length of the pipe across the bottom of the figure um, less than fifty feet long?
I don't know. It, this diagram appears to show, um, and on the left side, the pipe is open and buried, and that's not my understanding of the situation. Um, so I don't know what this diagram does or doesn't represent.
If this was an accurate depiction of the diversion at Polo Spring by the, by Fahy, would that make your testimony inaccurate?
I don't know.
Um, Mr. Lilly, might I have just, um, thirty seconds to, to confer with my colleagues to see whether we're done?
Yes, please go ahead. We'll just wait.
Mr. Lilly, that completes our cross-examination.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sanders. Um, and Ms. Mullen, you may go ahead and take down the screen sharing of this exhibit. All right, so Mr. Lowe, um, do you still have questions you want to ask Mr. Eggers?
Yes, and how much time are we giving people for cross?
Um, I'm going to limit you. Um, I, I allowed more time for Blue Triton than I'm going to allow for you, because they clearly are adverse to the prosecution team, where you are not, but I would like you to try to complete your questions in fifteen minutes. And again, I think if you just stick to very short questions as necessary, we can put up the exhibits, and you can ask him specific questions about exhibits, but I think that should be sufficient. So it's eleven forty now, and I'm gonna do a time check at eleven fifty-five, but go ahead with your questions. And, and of course, you don't need to take that much time.
Okay, let's bring up BTB seven, seven forty.
Okay, Ms. Mullen, please put up exhibit BTB seven and go to page seven forty. We have it. Go ahead with your question.
Mr. Eggers, you referred to this document earlier and, and looked at some graphs regarding the shut-ins. Who, who wrote this document, from what we know? It appears to be written by Mark Nichols. Okay, and what was the purpose of this document? The purpose of this document, um, was to report on shut-in testing conducted in twenty seventeen. And where was that at? Uh, the shut-in testing was conducted, according to the document, in, uh, the Lower Springs Complex at boreholes ten, eleven, and twelve. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, could we go to BTB seven, seven, page seven forty-seven, please?
Okay, same document, Ms. Mullen, please scroll to page seven forty-seven. All right, and this appears to be the page of the same memo. Go ahead.
Next to the last paragraph, please.
Okay, the next-to-last paragraph begins, "the extent of surface water observations."
Okay, could you read that paragraph, Mr. Eggers? "The extent of surface water observations closely mirrors changes in water level measured by the transducer during the shut-in and turnout periods. Surface water extent observations recorded before shut-in, during shut-in, and during turnout demonstrate that when the boreholes are shut in, the resulting increase in piezometric pressure within the bedrock fractures that convey water to the boreholes produces an observable corresponding change in the extent of surface water at the up gradient edge of the Lower Spring Complex." Okay, thank you. Could you read the next paragraph, please?
Okay, and Mr. Lowe, I'm, I'm going to ask you to move on. Um, I mean, I understand you're, you're trying to learn how to do this, and it's a complicated process, but we can all read these exhibits just as well as Mr. Eggers can. And to the extent, you're going to have an opportunity to file a closing brief, and you can cite to this if you want to, but I, I don't wanna have, spend our time having Mr. Eggers read a document that Mr. Nichols prepared when it's already in the record, and we can all do that. So unless you have any questions that really rely on getting to Mr. Eggers' specialized knowledge or expertise, um, I want you to move on. Um, because as I say, we can all read these as well as he can. And as I said, certainly can point it, you can make these same points in your closing brief, and trust me, I will read them, as I have read everything you have submitted.
Okay, could we go to BTB seven, seven, page seven fifty-six, please?
Okay, page seven five six, PDF page.
Mr. Eggers, could you look at this for just a second and, uh, and, and then, uh, tell me what it represents? Okay. Um, these are observations made by Haley and Aldrich, um, during and after, um, shut-in tests of the areas of the stream channel, um, below the, or in the studied area, and it notes where water was observed. Was this the entire spring, or was this one rivulet of the spring? Uh, I don't know that. This appears to be, um, a depiction of the Western Channel. Um, and my understanding is that the Western Channel runs through the spring as described by Mr. Nichols, which would be the area surrounding, uh, boreholes ten, eleven, and twelve. Okay, thank you. What does it show as the difference between the two periods during the shut-ins? Um, well, between figure five A and five B, it shows, in five A, it was a dry channel, and five B, um, after boreholes had been shut in, um, it was a wet channel. There was lengths of wetted surface, lengths of surface water occurrence, excuse me. And what does figure five C and five D show? Figures five C and, uh, five D are for the next, uh, should, turnout and shut-in period, and they show the same thing. Dry, um, when the boreholes have been turned out, that is, when the boreholes are extracting groundwater and wet after piezometric pressure is allowed to build up. And uh, it appears that the stream starts flowing. Thank you. Could we, um, go back to seven forty-seven, please, quickly? Page seven forty-seven?
Okay, we'll go to seven forty-seven. Do you wanna go down to the bottom, or where do you want?
No, let's go to the first paragraph.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, seven forty-eight, first paragraph.
Okay, we'll go to the next page. All right, we have BTB seven forty-eight up on the, uh, try that again. BTB seven, page seven forty-eight is on the screen.
Okay. In the first paragraph there, it says "the flow recorded on August seventh after the borehole had been shut in was one point six gallons per minute." Is that the same area that was, uh, represented in the chart that we just looked at? Uh, yes, I believe it is. Okay, then down in the third paragraph there, well, first, let me ask, is that increase of one point two six gallons per minute, is that significant in, uh, surface flow at, in August? Uh, yes, any flow, um, from these springs would be considered significant. Okay, let's go to the third paragraph. It says there that after the boreholes had been shut in, uh, there was an increase of one point two gallons per minute. Is that significant, uh, at that time of year for something to be flowing at that, uh, increment? Yes, as I said, any flow contributed by these springs is significant. Okay, um, in the next paragraph, where it says the flow values recorded? It says, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just asking her to scroll down. Go ahead.
Okay, it says, "the flow values recorded at the selected rivulet are very low in relation to the broader spring discharge area of the Lower Spring Complex." Um, so does it sound to you like it was just, uh, one rivulet that was selected to monitor? Yes, it appears that, um, they chose the, a rivulet because it would be the most sensitive to this type of, um, test. Um, it had the highest probability of, um, detecting a change in flow by monitoring an already flowing rivulet and seeing changes in it. Okay, thank you very much. That, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowe. So Ms. Frye, do you still have some questions you want to ask? And again, I'm gonna give you the same admonition I just gave to Mr. Lowe. Um, we, we don't need to have Mr. Eggers read things that are already in the record. All that really is appropriate now is if you have questions that relate to his specialized knowledge or expertise. And of course, are within the scope of his testimony.
Right. I was gonna ask several questions. Um, Mr. Eggers, um, was, can you clarify, was the methodology that, uh, Holly and Aldrich used provided to the prosecution team?
Um, to some extent, it was. Um, there were, you know, omissions, um, about why certain things were done. Um, but the, as I said in, in my testimony, the basics of both the twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-one tests were the same. What I testified to was that the methodology for the second test, um, you know, lacked rigor, because it was not clear where, uh, the piezometers were located relative to um, spring expressions, uh, why spring expressions, why they were selected, why those areas were selected, how the installation was done, if there was any, anything done to validate these areas, or they made assertions about what the piezometers were intended to do, but didn't validate that that's what had been done. And particularly with respect to the flow measurement, the, I call it Station Forty-nine, measurements were manipulated during the, the shut-in testing in ways that were not rigorous. Be they discharged the, the outflow of the boreholes directly above a flow measurement station, which is is, it's hard to know what exactly was the purpose of that, if not to artificially affect their flow measurements, and did not describe how that, any sort of QA QC procedures were done to clean up that data. So it was very substandard. That's why I took issue with the methodology for the twenty twenty-one shut-in testing.
Do you believe that this, the substandard methodology would alter, could alter results?
Absolutely.
But yeah, yeah, I, that question is so general, we don't know what results you're talking about. So I, I think if you're going to pursue this line of questions, Ms. Frye, you have to say what, basically ask him what, you know, disagreements with the testing methodology he has, and what results those could have affected. It's, it's got to be more specific than the general question.
And, Mr. Lilly, we further object to the extent we're going, it seems far beyond what Mr. Egger's written testimony is at this point, and this seems to be turning into just an expansion of the scope testimony, testimony offered.
Yeah, yeah, I have some concern about that, too. So, Ms. Frye, at this point, it's really, you are limited to asking him questions about his written testimony. So with that in mind, do you have any specific questions involve his understanding about the matters that he has discussed in his written testimony?
I'm going to ask. Do you believe, based on the what the data provided, the methodology, and your understanding and the lack of following-struck methodology, that you can actually even compare those two two thousand seventeen tests in two thousand twenty-one?
Objection beyond the scope.
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Frye, you know, he's explained what he thinks are the problems with comparing, or basically, he's explained the differences between the twenty seventeen tests and the twenty twenty-one tests. I, I'm not sure there's really anything more you can ask him about that. I mean, frankly, he's explained his analysis and his opinions very well. I'm not saying I agree with them, but I think he's explained them, and I'm not sure we really need any more clarification of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so is that all your question? Thank you. You don't have to turn off your camera. I didn't mean to offend you that much. Or maybe it went on.
I'm not offended.
Okay, thank you. All right, so before we, I would like to wrap up the prosecution team's case before our lunch break, but I do have to circle around. Mr. Sanders, based on the questions from Mr. Lowe and Ms. Frye, do you have, do you have any follow-up questions? You expressed some concern initially about that. I, I don't think they've raised any new matters that you need to cover, but I want to give you an opportunity in case you think they have.
I think we're okay, Mr. Lilly. We can, anything that was addressed, we can actually still address in Mark Nichols' surcer rebuttal.
I, I think that's going to be more efficient, so thank you. So, Mr. Petrazelli, do you have any, I cringe to ask, but do you have any redirect that you think you need to ask here?
I don't. Did you say something about a recross, or was there something just said about a recross?
I, I gave Mr. Sanders an opportunity to ask follow-up questions, and he decided not to exercise that. So the answer is, I, what I asked didn't end up leading to anything. So if, if you have no redirect, we're done. Mr. Petrazelli, would you like to offer the prosecution team's exhibits into evidence?
Yes, Mr. Lilly, at this time, we do.
Okay, and I have PT three one six through PT three two five with the two that we just labeled.
Oh, so is there still a need for us to upload those two exhibits?
No, there's not. My, my extremely capable staff has taken care of that problem, and thank you, Mr. Aldrich, very much. So are there any objections to exhibits PT three one six through PT three twenty-five coming into evidence?
Mr. Lilly, could we request to reserve on that point until after the lunch break?
Okay, on that very limited point of objecting to the exhibits, I will give you an opportunity to do that. And also, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be rude, Ms. Grady, but Mr. Sanders asked the question, so I'm going to direct the question to him. Are you going to want to offer BTB forty into evidence, Mr. Sanders?
We will, most likely, Mr. Lilly.
All right, and, Mr. Petrazelli, so you're alerted to that. I, I think it's probably admissible, but probably only for a limited purpose at this point. So.
On, on that note, Mr. Lilly, I believe Mr. Anderson notified the service list, I think it was on Friday, that there, I, and I haven't been able to see it yet, that there's a spreadsheet that indicates what exhibits have and haven't been accept, accepted into evidence. Is there an indication as to which exhibits were solely accepted for impeachment purposes?
Um, I don't know. I don't think so. However, the spreadsheet does list the date and time of, for the hearing recording where all those were ruled on. So if there's some question about that, you would be able to find it there. I don't think there were very many that were offered for that limited purpose, but you should be able to find it through the record that way. So hopefully, that'll answer your question.
Mr. Lilly, is this the appropriate time to object to the admission of BTB forty to evidence, or will we do it after lunch?
You can do that after lunch. Yeah, I'm not ruling on it. Don't worry. I'll give you a chance to object before I rule on it, so that's fine. All right, so let's plan to, we're just about ready to take our lunch break. So when we come back, we'll roll the exhibits. No more questions, Mr. Eggers. Mr. Eggers, thank you very much. You're done. Although, you probably should stick around just in case there are any questions about any of your exhibits. And then I'm going to go forward with Mr. Nichols, who's Blue Triton's only surrebutal witness, and he will proceed after lunch. And again, I don't know whether it's going to be Ms. Grady or Mr. Sanders, but the summary, I have read Mr. Nichols' testimony. It's very clear. So the summary can be very short, and we can get on. And I don't think the cross-examination is going to have to be very long either, because it's a pretty limited subject, and of course, the cross-examination will be limited to that subject. So we will do that after lunch, and then we will proceed with the Story of Stuff project witnesses after that, that being Amanda Frye, Steve Lowe, and Rachel Doty, and as I've ruled before, Mr. Keibl, I will not be allowing to testify, although his written, there was both a written, written proposed testimony and summary slides, and those will be accepted as non-evidentiary policy statements and legal arguments, and those people can cite to in their closing briefs. So with that, that's my plan for after lunch. If we finish with Story of Stuff, we will proceed with the Steve Lowe's own surrebutal testimony, and then Amanda Frye's own surrebutal testimony. Pretty confident we will not finish all of that today, so we will then continue tomorrow morning. So as a reminder, you need to log off and then log back on, because we do have a different session for the afternoon. I am inclined to come back at one, but I don't know, does anybody need, if anybody needs a little more time, we have a lot to do. Let's, let's make it one fifteen. I, I know you have a whole bunch of different things you all need to prepare for, so let's come back at one fifteen sharp, if that's possible. And we will start then. So any more questions before we sign off? Great, thank you. I will see you all at one fifteen. Thank you.